Welcome, everybody, to the meeting. And before we get started, just a few announcements. The first is, don't forget, and this is probably out of order, but don't forget, early voting goes through this Saturday, July 29th, and then the election is August 3rd. And so if you haven't voted yet, please vote. That's our Good Samaritan announcement of the day. And then if everybody would silent your phones, that would be great. We do have a new commissioner that I'm excited to announce. And please welcome Matt Smith. We welcome Mr. Smith. And as I try to do, I always try to embarrass the new commissioner. But it's, yeah, it's a rite of passage here. But a few things about Mr. Smith is that he's been with Turner Construction for about a dozen years. Overall, he's been in the construction profession for about 15. Really interesting fact, he's on the, I'm going to murder this, but it's the Tennessee Equine Advisory Board, which is a horse advisory board, which is really interesting. I would like to know more about that. He's married. He also has a two-year-old daughter. And guess what? Today is her birthday. So here he is, hanging out with us. So that means we're going to have a really short meeting, knock on wood, to get you home to celebrate birthday. But thank you so much. He's a lifelong Nashvilleian. For those of you in the public, we have a very balanced board, in my mind, with a lot of professionals in the industry, whether community activist, attorney, architect, we have a lot, banker, we have a lot of diverse professions and diverse people on this board who love Nashville, and I love having that. So, welcome to our fun board that sometimes goes past midnight. Hopefully not too much, right, Director? Yes. Okay. So we're back being out of order, and we're on item B, which is the adoption of the agenda. Is there a motion to adopt? There's a motion and a second, any discussion? Seeing none, all in favor say aye. Opposed, no. Ayes have it, and the agenda is adopted. Next is item C, which is the approval of the June 22nd, 2023 minutes, which were also handed out earlier and publicly posted. Is there a motion to adopt? There's a motion and a second, any other discussion? Seeing none, all in favor say aye. Opposed, no. Ayes have it, and the June 22nd minutes are adopted. We are now on to the recognition of the council members, but I do want to remind commissioners, just, we've been in this room before, the microphones are a little sensitive, so always think of them as being hot, so on, in other words. Okay. Just a reminder for everybody. All right. So, next, recognition of the council members, and I just take the council members as we see y'all come in, and first I saw Councilman Tom Cash. You want to come, you want to wait, or, okay, no problem. Councilman Cash, you're going to wait. Councilwoman Murphy, you want to go? All right, welcome.
Thank you. I realize that this is one where I'm just going to tell you all about my issues and then get out of here, and usually, and it's going to be a short meeting, like, could you, could you make your agenda longer or something? No? Okay. I feel like I'm always here for long meetings. So, what, the items before you in my district today, Kathleen Murphy, District 24, 231, Orlando Avenue. So we've got three items. One, I've talked to you about before, and it's being deferred until August. It is a development on Charlotte Avenue that I think has a lot of potential if they start listening to your planning staff and to the community policy and plan there. And I really think that it should be, as I mentioned before, it needs to be indefinitely deferred. Council, Council Lady Brenda Gadd is, Council Lady, soon-to-be Brenda Gadd is here, who will be representing the district, and it's not like there are going to be community meetings until at least October. So really, I would recommend that y'all just get it off your plate, but that's up to y'all. Then I've got two overlays in Sylvan Park. The one on Dakota, and I'm sorry, I don't have the item numbers in front of me. The one on Dakota, I'm going to withdraw. That's one that neighbors have brought to me, and there's about 50/50 support. Unfortunately, this is one where I think we, as Metro and, it's more codes than anything else, we've got to do a better job of getting, explaining the contextual overlays. It's not easy to understand how the math works, the way that it's laid out online. And so this is one where we've had a lot of misinformation and neighbors feeling pressured by other neighbors, and so I'm going to withdraw that one. And they can, if they regroup or come back, they can do that under the next term, but we've already kind of laid that groundwork. And then the-
And Councilwoman, I think that's item 17, for the record.
For Dakota Avenue.
Dakota Avenue, yes.
And then the other one is Wyoming Avenue, and that one, we've had overwhelming support. I know y'all got a letter from one neighbor. I hadn't heard from them, but otherwise, I have not had any opposition to the one on Wyoming. So that one, I would like to be moving forward, and I believe that's on consent. So with that, I think this is hopefully my last time before you guys.
Thank you, Councilwoman, and we really appreciate it. I know I've enjoyed working with you, and I know the commissioners have too. It's been a pleasure.
Thank you.
You and your dad, long legacy.
Thank you.
That item was item 16. Thank you. All right. So, seeing no other council members, I do want to say thank you to Brenda for coming down. It's good to see you, and we appreciate it. Councilmember-elect Brenda Gadd, okay. I think Amelia is, so that leads us to our next item. Seeing no other council members, that leads us to item E, which is items for deferral withdrawal, and I think Amelia is going to take us through that. Okay. Amelia?
Yeah, can you guys hear me okay? Okay.
Yes, ma'am.
Thank you. Okay, starting with item E, items for deferral or withdrawal. Item number one, 2023 CP 014002, Donaldson Hermitage Old Hickory Community Plan Amendment. The staff recommendation is defer to the August 24th meeting. Item number two, on page three of your agenda, 2014 SP 050002, staff recommendation is defer to the September 14th Planning Commission meeting. On page four of your agenda, item number three, 2023 SP 005001, Riverside at Metro Center SP, staff recommendation is defer to August 24th. Item number four, 2023 SP 054001, Charlotte Pike Mixed Use, staff recommendation is defer to the August 24th meeting. Item number five, 2019 S 039002, Payne Road Subdivision, staff recommendation is to defer indefinitely. Item number six, 2022 S 200001, Plan of Hamilton Place, staff recommendation is to defer to the August 24th meeting. On page five of your agenda, item number eight, 2023 Z 066 PR 001, staff recommendation is defer to September 14th. Item number nine, 2023 CP 013001, Inyoak, Priest Lake, Donaldson Hermitage Old Hickory Community Plan Amendment, staff recommendation is defer to September 14th. Item number 10, 2023 SP 059001, 475 and 487 Humphreys Street, staff recommendation is defer to August 24th. On page six of your agenda, item number 13, 2023 SP 069001, 3800 Old Hickory Boulevard, staff recommendation is defer to August 24th. On page seven of your agenda, item number 17, 2023 COD 009001, that's the contextual overlay along Dakota Avenue, staff recommendation is to withdraw. On page eight of your agenda, item number 22, 2023 S 115001, D.C. Kelly Subdivision, staff recommendation is defer to August 24th. And on page nine of your agenda, item number 28, 2023 Z 084 PR 001, a rezoning along Mary Street, staff recommendation is defer to August 24th.
Thank you, Amelia. And so commissioners, these are the, and Amelia, make sure I get these correct for the commissioners, the items for deferral or withdrawal are the following. Items number one, two, three, four, five, six, eight, nine, 10, 13, 17, 22, and 28. Is that correct?
That's correct.
All right, commissioners, you've heard the items for deferral or withdrawal. Is there a motion? Motion, second, any other discussion? Seeing none, all in favor say aye. Opposed, no. Ayes have it, and those items are deferred or withdrawn. So that leads us to our next item on the agenda, which is item F, which is the consent agenda. And Amelia is going to take us through that again.
Yeah. Items on the consent agenda tonight. I will read through all of the items on the consent agenda and ask if anyone is here in opposition. If so, please raise your hand, and if there is someone in opposition, the items will be presented in the order that they appear on the agenda. If no one is in opposition to the item, the item will be on the consent agenda. And if you could, when you raise your hand, hold it up for a minute, so I can turn, twist, double-check. Starting on page four of your agenda, item number seven, 2023 Z 037 PR 001, that's a request to rezone along John L. Copeland Boulevard. Is anyone here in opposition to this item? This item will be on the consent agenda. On page five of your agenda, item number 11, 2022 S 276001, Burkett Ridge Phase 6. Is anyone here in opposition to this item? This item will be placed on the consent agenda. On page six of your agenda, item number 14, 2023 S 08001, 1419 Riverside. Is anyone here in opposition to this item? This item will be placed on the consent agenda. Item number 15A, 2023 SP 072001, Grizzard Avenue SP. And the associated case, item 15B, 10886P 001, Old Trinity Estates, PUD cancellation. Is anyone here in opposition to items 15A or 15B? Those items will be on the consent agenda. On page seven of your agenda, item number 16, 2023 COD 008001, is anyone here in opposition to this item? This item will be placed on the consent agenda. Item number 18, 2023 DDU 002001, this is for a detached accessory dwelling unit overlay along Fairfax and Barton. Is anyone here in opposition to this item? This item will be placed on the consent agenda. Item number 19, 2023 HP 001001, this is a downtown historic preservation overlay expansion. Is anyone here in opposition to this item? That item will be placed on our agenda to be heard. Continuing on page seven, item number 20, 2023 Z 005 TX 001, this is a request to amend Title 17. Is anyone here in opposition to this item? This item will be on the consent agenda. On page eight of your agenda, item number 21, 2023 S 105001, The Homes at Greycroft. Is anyone here in opposition to this item? This item will be on the consent agenda. Item number 23, 2023 S 117001, FO Beasley's McFerrin Edition. Is anyone here in opposition to this item? This item will be on the consent agenda. Item number 24, 2023 S 119001, Hermitage Estates. Is anyone here in opposition to this item? This item will be on the consent agenda. Item number 25, 2023 Z 075 PR 001, this is a rezone to R 6A on 736 Douglas. Is anyone here in opposition to this item? This item will be on the consent agenda. Item number 26, 2023 Z 076 PR 001, this is a request to rezone along Shelby and 10th Avenue, 10th Street, my apologies. Is anyone here in opposition to this item? Seeing no one, this item will be on the consent agenda. Item 27, 2023 Z 081 PR 001, this is a request to rezone along Manchester Avenue. Is anyone here in opposition to this item? This item will be on the consent agenda. Item number 29, 2023 Z 086 PR 001, a rezone along Elizabeth Road. Is anyone here in opposition to this item? This item will be on the consent agenda. Okay, that was our first run-through of the consent agenda. Now I will run through all of it, again, with the captions. As information for our audience, if you are not satisfied with the decision made by the Planning Commission today, you may appeal the decision by petitioning for a writ of cert with the Davidson County Chancery or Circuit Court. Your appeal must be filed within 60 days of the date of the entry of the Planning Commission's decision. To ensure that your appeal is filed in a timely manner and that all procedural requirements have been met, please be advised that you should contact independent legal counsel. Looking at items on the consent agenda tonight, starting on page four, item number seven, 2023 Z 037 PR 001, that's a request to rezone along John L. Copeland Boulevard, staff recommendation is to approve. On page five of your agenda, item number 11, 2022 S 276001, Burkett Ridge Phase 6. This is a final plat request to create 79 lots along Burkett Ridge. Staff recommendation is to approve with conditions. On page six of your agenda, item number 14, 2023 S 08001, 1419 Riverside. This is a request for a final plat to create two lots at 1419 Riverside Drive. Staff recommendation is to approve with conditions, including an exception to Chapter 3 for lot frontage and Chapter 3 for lot area. Continuing on page six, item number 15A, 2023 SP 072001, Grizzard Avenue, that's a request to rezone from CS and RS5 to SP for properties along Grizzard and Old Trinity Lane. Staff recommendation is to approve with conditions and disapprove without all conditions. And the associated case, item 15B, 10886P 001, Old Trinity Estates, PUD cancellation. This is a request to cancel a PUD along Grizzard and Old Trinity Lane. Staff recommendation is to approve if the associated SP is approved and disapprove if the associated SP is not approved. On page seven of your agenda, item number 16, 2023 COD 008001, this is a request to apply contextual overlay for properties along Wyoming Avenue. Staff recommendation is to approve. Item number 18, 2023 DDU 002001, this is a request to apply a detached accessory dwelling unit overlay for properties along Fairfax and Barton. Staff recommendation is to approve. Item number 20, 2023 Z 005 TX 001, this is a request to amend Title 17 related to signage and codes. Staff recommendation is to approve. On page eight of your agenda, item number 21, 2023 S 105001, The Homes at Greycroft. This is a request for, request for a final plat to create two lots at 1102 South Greycroft. Staff recommendation is to approve with conditions, including an exception to Chapter 3 for lot Item number 23, 2023 S 117001, FO Beasley's McFerrin addition to East Nashville 4. This is a request for a final plat approval to create four lots at 615 and 621 North 9th Street. Staff recommendation is to approve with conditions, including exceptions to Sections, to Sections 3 for lot frontage and for lot area. Item number 24, 2023 S 119001, Hermitage Estates. This is a final plat approval to reserve, to remove reserve parcel status for property along Belinda Drive. Staff recommendation is to approve with conditions. Item number 25, 2023 Z 075 PR 001, this is a request to rezone from SP to R 6A for property at 736 Douglas Avenue. Staff recommendation is to approve. Item number 26, 2023 Z 076 PR 001, this is a request to rezone properties along Shelby Avenue and South 10th Street. Staff recommendation is to approve. Item number 27, 2023 Z 081 PR 001, this is a request to rezone from RS10 to R10 for property at 1813 Manchester. Staff recommendation is to approve. Item number 29, 2023 Z 086 PR 001, this is a request to rezone from RS10 to R10 for properties at 1811 and 1813 Elizabeth Road. Staff recommendation is to approve. And under item H, other business, items 30, bonus height certification memo for 909 Division Street, and 35, accept the director's report.
Thank you, Amelia. And so commissioners, here are the items for the, to pass on the, all together, on the consent agenda. Item 7, 11, 14, 15A, 15B, 16, 18, 20, 21, 23, 24, 25, 26, 27, 29, 30, and 35. Is that correct, Amelia?
That's correct.
All right, commissioners, you've heard the items to pass on the consent agenda. Is there a motion? Question? Commissioner, Commissioner, you, hold on, Commissioner, you got to turn the mic on. There we go.
Thank you. Item 31, is it not on the consent, or?
No, we need, we have to consider it because we need it in the minutes for the approval. And so what that is, just so everybody knows, is it's the COLA raises and some reclassification raises, and the contract for our executive director. So we'll get to the discussion during that timeframe at the end of the meeting, but we have to consider it. Yes, ma'am.
Thank you for the clarification.
Yeah, and we should have a discussion about it.
With that, I move to approve consent agenda items with associated conditions.
That's a proper motion. Is there a second? Second, any other discussion? Seeing none, all in favor say aye. Opposed, no. Ayes have it, and those items are adopted on the consent agenda. Next is items, is item G, which is the items to be considered on public hearing, which will, I believe, Director, is items number 12 and 19. And then in other business, we will consider item, as we always do, items, well, 31, and then we'll go through the reports of each, each of the commissioners. So, before we get started, just a reminder for everybody, is that the process, some folks have been here, some have not, so we go through this very quickly. First, we do the presentation, we'll open the public hearing, the applicant gets 10 minutes, they can save two of the 10 minutes for rebuttal, and then we go in, everybody will line up, anyone wishing to speak in support, have two minutes, state your name and address for the, for the record, and then anyone in opposition after everyone speaks in favor. And then we'll have the rebuttal, the council member, and then we'll close the public hearing and then have discussion. So I just go through that process, just so everybody knows. So we are on to item number 12. Dustin.
All right. Dustin Chane, staff planner. This is item 12, Martin Reserve Subdivision. This is a concept plan to create eight lots, and our recommendation is to approve with conditions. Zoning on the site is R 20, and it's in the T3 suburban neighborhood maintenance policy. Here's a look at the lot layout proposed. It's eight lots, one new public right-of-way, ending in a modified hammerhead turnaround with two duplex lots identified, and stormwater infrastructure there along the ends of lots 6 through 8. So this is a planning commission review because it's a major subdivision, there's a new road proposed. It's in the T3 suburban transect, so we apply Chapter 3. All standards were met, ignore that, except right there, I was, when I updated my PowerPoint, I missed that. We had published a disapproval on Friday because not all agencies had approved. The memo on your desk is in reference to all agencies having approved at this point. So, moving on, it's zoned R 20, it meets all zoning regulations, and as I said, two duplex lots were identified. Code allows 25% of the lots to be duplex. That modified hammerhead turnaround was approved by the Fire Marshal and by NDOT. Just a word about that issue with the stormwater infrastructure, it's within private lots, and as I said, it was approved by stormwater after we published the report. Typically, we see that infrastructure in common open space, not within private lots. There's nothing technically in the regulations that we found that would prohibit it being in a private lot. In fact, it says it could be under an easement or within open space. So stormwater has crafted a condition to require easements to be recorded between a HOA responsible for their maintenance and with Metro, so that we have access to them. So just looking at policy real quick, planning commission might consider policy, and this is in the T3 neighborhood maintenance transect, and that requires maintaining the general character of suburban neighborhoods while providing for enhanced housing choice and connectivity. So we find that it meets that policy and the zoning, so we recommend approval with conditions. Thank you.
Thank you, sir. Appreciate that. So commissioners, we'll open this item for public hearing. Is the applicant in the room? Mr. Sloan, welcome. Let's make sure your mic's on. You have to push it, maybe.
Yeah, I can just move over here. Please, it's not running my time, is it? Okay.
Yes.
Doug Sloan, 6354 Torrington Road, I represent the applicant. Add them what Dustin's already said. It is 20,000 square feet lots, which is consistent or larger than the surrounding lots of all the properties in the area, except for the, the one parcel that comes right off of Abbott Martin. But for all the other subdivisions surrounding it, they are either 20,000 or less. And so this development is consistent both with the policy, as Dustin pointed out, and consistent with the surrounding area. We did have some issues that we needed to resolve regarding the stormwater. There's a fairly, pretty good slope to the back corner where you see the stormwater detention area. The main concern by stormwater was that 20 years from now, if a tree has grown in the stormwater system, that there's adequate funds to be able to pay to clean that up. And so what we've done is, we've set up a system where that will, there'll be an easement from those owners to the homeowners association, making the homeowners association responsible for the maintenance of the detention pond, and have an easement to the access, both the detention pond and a way to get to it. And, and then also, that will, that same easement will then pass on, well, the easement to the property, not the maintenance of, the detention pond area will pass on to the stormwater, metropolitan stormwater. So that's it. That was the only little wrinkle in this one, but otherwise, it meets the policy and the subdivision regs. So we thank you for your time. If you have any questions, we're here. Thank you.
Thank you, sir. We'll reserve two minutes for rebuttal. All right. Anyone wishing to speak in support? Seeing none, anyone wishing to speak in opposition? Seeing none, I'm assuming, Mr. Sloan, you don't want to have a rebuttal? And the council member is, Mr. Polley's not here, so seeing no one else wishing to speak, I declare the public hearing closed. And so we're on to the commissioners, and we've kind of, instead of calling on everybody, we've adopted this new process, we start with somebody, and then if y'all want to speak, just raise your hand, we'll put you on a list. And so Commissioner Hanley, you want to start us off?
Great, great. Well, no, I mean-
Well, no, I mean, I believe, you know, based on the memo that we've received, you know, what we would have seen this evening would have been just a staff approval with conditions. I don't think there's much to add, but I do like the fact that we are, again, pursuing increased density in, in areas of our city to produce housing. So I'm just, I'm glad to see that. I don't really have any further comments.
Any other discussion? Seeing none, Commissioner Hanley, you want to make a motion to adopt?
Absolutely. Now, I can be corrected if I do this incorrectly, but I'd like to make a motion to approve the case and go against the staff recommendation for disapproval.
Well, and I think, Lisa, they've updated their position.
We, yeah, the memo updates our recommendation to approve with conditions, so you can just go with the staff recommendation.
So motion is to approve with conditions. That's a proper motion. Is there a second? Second, any other discussion? Seeing none, all in favor say aye. Pose no, ayes have it, and item 12 is adopted. We are on to item number 19. Go ahead, when you're ready, we're ready.
All right. Selena Cunningham of the Planning Department presenting item number 19. The request is to expand a historic preservation overlay district to various properties located along Third and Fourth Avenue, northwest of Dietrich Street. Staff's recommendation is to approve. The current zoning is downtown code and is intended for high intensity office, retail, restaurant, amusement, and residential use, and is designed to create walkable neighborhoods using appropriate building placement and bulk standards. The current downtown historic preservation zoning overlay currently includes two buildings, the J.C. Bradford Building at 174th Avenue North, now the Courtyard Marriott, or by Marriott, and the U.S. Bank Building at 208 Fourth Avenue North, now the Noel Hotel, which are part of the Printer's Alley National Register District. The proposed expansion of the historic preservation overlay district would see to include a greater geographical area which possesses, possesses a significant concentration, linkage, or continuity of sites, buildings, structures, or objects which are united by past events or aesthetically by plan or physical development. The policy on the site is T6 Downtown Core, and it's intended to have the highest intensity of development in the county. Offices are the predominant type of development, although the T6 Downtown Core contains a diverse array of land uses, including retail, entertainment, institutional uses, government services, and higher density residential. The highest intensity of development is in the central portion of the core, north of Broadway. And this policy and many others support historic preservation. There have been two community meetings, one in March of 2022 and one in June of 2023. And additionally, there was a historic, Metro Historic Zoning Commission public hearing in July of 2023, and the Metro Historic Zoning Commission recommended approval. The area recommended for the expansion is a portion of Nashville's Historic Central Business District, as well as additional National Register eligible historic buildings. The proposed district contains 83% contributing historic buildings. Parcels highlighted in purple are those currently included in the downtown historic preservation zoning overlay, and those highlighted in green are proposed to be included. Overlays do not replace the base zoning, but provide additional considerations for development in these areas. Future development would be reviewed by the Metro Historic Zoning Commission, and these are some of the examples of the buildings that are proposed to be included. And given the goal of historic preservation and the Metro Historic Zoning Commission's approval, planning staff recommends approval as well.
Thank you. And so the applicant, so commissioners will open the item for public hearing. The applicant is really the council member, but is there any other owners in support? Or Lisa?
Councilmember O'Connell did send a letter to the commissioners indicating that he would not be able to be present today. He provided me with some information in case, once we hear the opposition, that if I need to, to present that, I can. But he did send a letter indicating he would not be able to attend today.
Okay. So we'll go on to anyone wishing to speak in support of the overlay. Come on up. And we're, we're gonna do the microphone, yeah, right in the seat, that way, and then you have to push the button, I believe, if it's not green.
Push. Okay.
And then just state your name and address for the record.
It's Meg Hershey, 224 Summit Ridge Drive. Good evening. As a local historic preservation professional and just someone that loves Nashville, Nashvillian, been here about 13 years, I support the expansion of this downtown overlay. I would like to express my sincere thanks to the longtime property owners that own property in this area and have stewarded these historic buildings without any additional regulation over them. But just given the growth in our city and, you know, just uncertain times of sales of properties and things like that, I do believe that this is a very important tool. I also believe that we need to further provide opportunities to protect these investments that these property owners have made. So I support any further development on the bonus height program. I believe that's coming back before you all later this, excuse me, later this fall, and potential investigation of a transfer of development rights program. Thank you.
Thank you. Anyone else wishing to speak in support? Come on up. Welcome.
Thank you. My name is Dennis Daniels, I'm an architect in Nashville, historic preservationist in heart. I'd like to speak on behalf of this project, not as an owner, but as a constituent, as a citizen and as an architect. I am supportive of this, of this overlay, and believe it's definitely meaningful for the continuation for preservation in Nashville. And I think there are some considerations to continue on, like was mentioned previously about bonus height programs and other things. I would edge into consideration that we also look closely about the overlay districts and what they're actually performing and providing versus the assets they're trying to preserve. And I think we need to strengthen those aspects and continue to develop those as, as, as a whole, especially as we go into a new decade and a new era of preservation, where we can go just from holding it as it is and really pushing it beyond to, to great places that really involve and include the historic preservation that we're trying to, to, to keep around. That's all I would say, so appreciate your time and thanks for having me here.
Thank you. Appreciate you coming down. Anyone else?
Chairman, I think we are running the timer. It just, for some reason, isn't showing up on the screen, so it is going at two minutes, but we, no one can, public can't see it, so.
We'll give it one, give us one second, and then, we're sorry to interrupt your presentation, but we'll get right to you.
Just keep saying hello. Yes. Chairman, how many planners does it take to make a timer work? Not, not.
Not too many. Actually, I'm not going to answer that. We might need an engineer. No, I'm just kidding. Planners are always fighting with engineers. It's inside joke, everybody, but.
I'll just let it go.
Okay, like, and then we'll, we'll give everybody some leeway, so you have two minutes, and please state your name and address. Thank you.
Hello, how are y'all? I'm Kelly Bannon, 3707 Princeton Avenue. My parents and family moved here in 83. And I'm the president and co-founder of the Preservation Society of Nashville. We so appreciate the hard work of staff and the many supporters of this effort, it's many years I'm making. We fully support the proposed expansion of the downtown historic preservation overlay. We also want to highlight that the expanded area encompasses architecturally significant historic structures that are truly tangible reminders of important eras in our city's history, stories of Nashville's commerce and entertainment industries of the late 19th and 20th century. As of in 2019, historic preservation and conservation overlay districts made up just 12% of parcels and 6% of the land area in Nashville. And adding these approximately 40 parcels is a crucially important step in the preservation of Music City. And I also want to highlight something that's been brought up already, which is, we believe that two things can be true at the same time. We fully support this expansion, but we also acknowledge that Nashville is a growing economic center, and these property owners who were really grateful for their stewardship over the many decades, they deserve tools and resources that don't stunt their own economic vitality. Therefore, the society also supports the further development of the bonus height program and other future planning tools and models that support commerce and preservation. We believe we can have both, and I thank you so much.
Thank you. Appreciate you coming down.
Good afternoon, commissioners. I'm Cyril Stewart. I'm at 3813 Whitland Avenue here in Nashville. Grew up in Nashville and remember seeing, you know, all these downtown buildings growing up. But, you know, 60 years ago, Jane Jacobs wrote the Bible on historic preservation, on urban planning. And that Bible on urban planning devoted an entire chapter to the importance of historic buildings. As we go into this, the biggest threat to historic preservation is affluence and, and great economic conditions. We're certainly seeing those times now. We were able to keep Second Avenue because of the insight of a lot of people and some economic conditions that didn't support their removal. We are now at a point where we have so much going on in this town, the buildings that are within this overlay are architecturally significant, 83% are contributing buildings. There's some of the most vibrant streets in town, the ones that add to the authenticity that we really believe in and pride ourselves on having in Nashville. It's Printer's Alley, Fourth Avenue, Church Street, Union, Third Avenue, so some of those most vital areas of the downtown. And so we actually urge that you support this and approve this as a recommendation to the council. Thank you so much.
Thank you. Anyone else wishing to speak in sport? Seeing none, anyone wishing to speak in opposition? And then if you have handouts, you can give them to the team, and we'll get them. Let's, let's get them to the commissioners before you start speaking. Just give us a second, and we'll hand these out, that way we're all paying attention to you when you're speaking. All right.
Good afternoon.
But you'll have to speak into the microphone. There we go.
Good afternoon. I'm Mark Morrison, live at 4100 Veilwood Drive in Green Hills. I'm one of the owners of 323 and 325 Union Street. We expose the expansion of the downtown historic district to the extent it includes our properties which are on the periphery of the proposed expansion. I request the planning commission recommend that the Union Street properties be removed from the proposed expansion. I have provided the commissioners with a small packet containing some photos of the area that surround our building. The photos correspond to my July 24 letter and show the non-contributing buildings in our immediate area. These non-contributing buildings mean Union Street does not meet the definition of an historic zone under Tennessee law or the Metro Code. The staff report states there must be significant concentration, linkages, or continuity of sites and structures. The Union Street properties do not meet this definition. There are two small clusters of four buildings on Union Street. Nothing else sits there. In addition, the staff report never discusses or gives a reason why 323 through 329 should be included within the expanded district. Thus, the record does not contain any evidence or analysis why the zone should include these buildings, and therefore we request the planning commission correct the error of the historic zoning commission in expanding it. We also expose the expansion because the properties are already subject to the MDHA Capitol Hill Mall redevelopment district. And including these properties to those layers, to the expansion and the additional layers of regulation takes away valuable property rights. Now, I want to show the first picture in the package shows our building at 323 Union. In 2009, a portion of the facade of the building collapsed. We worked with MDHA and restored it. Now, this is the left-hand building. As you can tell, we were good stewards of building to building, and we think MDHA regulation is more than adequate. And I repeat again what we heard from the historical group.
You can finish your thought, of course.
That, from the historical group, that we have been good stewards. And until we know what the situation is with the bonus height restriction or what we can do, we have to oppose because it's, we're taking away an economic benefit. My partners won't let me come in and work with anybody because I don't know the answer. We don't know what's going to happen.
Thank you. Appreciate it. Next.
Hi, my name is Dan Ford. I represent the owners of 419 Union. Address is 9518 Elm Brook Boulevard. In effect, we've got two small clusters of old buildings, and a number of which are no longer entitled to be labeled as historic. The entire north side of Union Street are all modern, high-rise buildings. The height of the buildings in the Nashville Financial Historic District fronts on Union. The Indigo Hotel and American Trust Buildings are four or five, four to five times higher than our building. So as Mark mentioned, we can't support it until we kind of know the economic outcome of the process. So, thank you.
Thank you, sir. Welcome.
Doug Sloan, 6354 Torrington Road, and my family's been here for over six generations in Nashville. I was born and raised here. I am familiar with, very familiar with this area of town and represent over a half dozen of the properties that are identified in the overlay, of the proposal of the expansion of the overlay. And I would tell you that a number of them are perfectly happy with this expansion and being part of it. And the ones that are, are the ones that have already worked with historic and already worked with planning to redevelop their properties. And they've achieved those bonuses that were just discussed for that preservation. And the ones that have not achieved that, that haven't redeveloped the properties or renovated those properties completely are opposed to it for the simple fact that the expansion of the overlay removes their leverage and the value of that property that might be obtained through development. And not just development of that property, but it's something that I've spoken to this commission and to the Historic Preservation Board about before, and that is the rewrite of the DTC. Within the rewrite of the DTC and the ability to increase the bonuses for historic preservation is the key pin to get everybody, all of these property owners, on board. There's an opportunity to have all of them here speaking in favor of this expansion, but it lies with the, the changes to the DTC and the, the expansion of the entitlements that are exchanged for historic preservation. Today, the DTC doesn't properly encourage historic preservation, as a matter of fact, compared to the economics of tearing a historic building down and rebuilding it. It, it, it serves no purpose, it serves no leverage against that. But if you will multiply those entitlements so that the people who own those historic buildings can sell those development rights as TDRs to development going on downtown, then it will work to that advantage. And we would ask that you simply either allow those, those property owners to carve themselves out of the overlay, the ones that, that haven't.
Thank you, Mr. Sloan.
Worked out, or defer it. Thank you.
I kindly ask you guys to kind of defer this meeting until we kind of figure out some more.
Thank you, sir. Appreciate it. Anyone else wishing to speak in opposition? Seeing none, Lisa, we'll recognize you with the comments from the council member.
Sure. The Councilmember, Councilmember O'Connell, in his letter to you all that is on the SharePoint file and is shared publicly, indicated that he does expect that there would be amendments to the proposed map prior to third reading. There is the ability to amend zoning map or zoning ordinances up until third reading. This is planned for public hearing and second reading next week, and then two weeks later would be the planned third reading. He said that he does not consider the boundaries to be final and is willing to amend the boundaries based on information that he's hearing.
Thank you. That's very helpful. The Councilmember's not here, so seeing no one else wishing to speak, I declare the public hearing closed. Councilman, do you want to start us off? And then we'll call. Since Freddie's not here, Councilman O'Connell, sorry.
You know, ironically enough, I run into a lot of people and they're like, "Are you on Metro Council?" Like I am. And they're like, "Are you Freddie O'Connell?" And I say, "No, I'm his evil twin." So, but I'm not the evil twin.
That's why I called in.
I'm going to support my colleague today. I know Councilmember O'Connell's been so involved with the downtown area in District 19 for many years as a neighborhood leader, long before serving on council, and has worked very diligently on preservation efforts all during our service together for these past eight years. I know that Councilmember O'Connell also is very supportive of growth and development in the downtown district and has kind of balanced out short-term rentals and tourism and also overseen it turn into one of the fastest-growing residential neighborhoods in the county. So, I value obviously the information from historic staff and was able to be president at the Historic Zoning Commission earlier. And I know that Councilmember O'Connell will be very thoughtful in working with property owners to set those boundaries on third reading. And so I am in support of the staff recommendation and of my colleague. So, thank you.
Thank you. And I should mention that Ms. Ziegler, Robin Ziegler's here, the Director of Historic. And so, I want to make sure, do you have anything to add, Director, that could help? Okay. And if we have questions, I just wanted the Commissioners to know that she's here, willing to answer any questions that we have. And thank you, by the way, for coming. We really appreciate it. All right. Any other discussion? Commissioner Clifton?
This is, I think, maybe one of the first times I've had to deal with downtown issues where property owners were not supportive. I know we've had a lot of residential overlays where, including parts of the 18th district where I've lived for a long time, where it's not been exactly 100%, but it's been very overwhelming. And in many of those cases, the contour district was based on excluding those which were not ready for it. I want to ask for information. Are there areas downtown which have this overlay against the will of the owners?
We'll get the Director of Historic to answer that. And just, if you could, state your name for the record and title.
I'm Robin Ziegler. I'm the Historic Zoning Administrator for Historic Zoning Commission. And every overlay has had support and people who are against it as well. I think you saw that, I'm trying to remember the numbers, what I looked at just based on people I've talked to. I don't have any formal emails or letters or anything, but just based on discussions and what we've heard in the community meeting, about 20% support it, or probably about 30% and probably about 30% that are against it, and the others we haven't heard from. So, I have to assume that they're at least okay with it. So, yeah, all of the overlays, there's been support and there's been people who are against it as well. Downtown, we have the Second Avenue District Broadway, and the downtown overlay currently has two properties in it.
Director?
And if I may, you know, Commissioner, we heard from, we have a booklet from two members, it wasn't quite clear if they're joint owners, but two buildings on Union Street who don't support this. So, we have at least evidence here that that's the case. And then Mr. Sloan noted that he represented some folks who aren't supportive, but this reflects opposition based on specific properties.
I've been a supporter of overlays for a long time, while on the council and on this commission. Can't vote for this one. I don't think it's quite ready for prime time. I think it may be driven by the end of a term, which I understand. But I may be the only one. I just, I love living in the district I live in. I love the fact that the majority of it is preserved through conservation overlays at least. That came about after long, long discussions and something near unanimity, if not unanimity. I don't see myself as a major property rights zealot, but for me, this is a bridge too far right now.
Thank you, Commissioner. Any other discussion? Commissioner Johnson?
Thank you, Chair. We discussed at the Historic Zoning Commission last week, and we heard from opposition who are rather concerned because some property owner want to be excluded. As a body, we recommended approval because it meets policy. And also, you know, when we talk about policy, we talk about Nashville Next, that is Nashville general plan for, you know, 20, 30 years. The beauty of the Nashville Next is we go for growth and preservation. And we do have, you know, growth and we encourage high-rise building in downtown core. At the same time, we emphasize how important to preserve Second Avenue, Printer's Alley, not only building itself, but the culture and economic development that time associated with those buildings. So, I think in that sense, expanding historic zoning overlay is very important to preserve those culture, not only building. And also, you know, once you are included in historic zoning overlay, the property owner can take advantage of tax abatement program. And also, I think now we are talking about DTC amendment, so they can utilize, you know, property rights. So, I think this one, we have been, as a historic commission and also council member, have been talking more than two years. And I think it's just finally came to the point we can, you know, move forward. So, I would like the fellow commissioners to encourage to approve it. And of course, this is a zoning bill. Councilmember O'Connell can, if he sees and the community and property owner sees fit, a certain building can be excluded. But I believe it's not for us to pick, you know, which building should be included or excluded. So, I'm comfortable recommending as is recommended by the staff and then encourage council member to, if indeed some exclusion is warranted, keep going forward to have that conversation and amend at the council. So, for that reason, I'm 100% support.
Thank you, Commissioner. Commissioner Smith?
Thank you, Chair. This for staff, is there, may not be a short answer, is there a short answer on what the main difference between current MDHA regulations would be and what it would be after this overlay was put into place?
Their main goal is not preservation, although it's a big part of what they do. But the main thing that they don't do is control demolition. This is the only tool in the city that controls demolition. And I don't mean completely disallows all of it. Sometimes old buildings need to come down. But it does have some control over it. So, that's the only tool that's going to prevent that demolition.
Thank you. Any other questions from the Commissioners? Commissioner Clifton?
All of my sympathies are with preserving this. I spent Saturday on Eighth Avenue at a historic building that's right across from the Frost Building at the Seminole Board. I've forgotten the name of the building. Somebody knows it in here. It was a wonderful experience. I'm so glad that that's being restored. I just, it's a little bit of a foreign concept to me to override what the property owner, 100% of the property owners for certain structures want. But Commissioner's correct. There are two different functions here. One is the political function and weighing the balance and all of that. And the other is, as a policy matter, what do we think is right for the city? That helps me, and of course, you're right on that. So, I'm not going to vote against it, even though I think it does, it's a puzzling thing to me that it hasn't been able, I just think it needs more time. But that's not a planning statement. And I'm okay with voting for it today because of that.
We can enter into the record and our advice to the Councilman, which is our capacity here, that if this is the sense of the commission, that we think this meets the policy and we support it, but recommend that he work with those property owners who are opposed to their property being included. We can certainly include that in the record. I think I would agree that it's not for this body with this information to, you know, remove properties. But I think it does support Nashville Next objectives, and I think we can send that signal that you're asking about to the Councilman, and he can take it under consideration.
Director, I think that's great. I too share Commissioner Clifton and Commissioner Johnson's feelings. You know, I agree with both of them, actually. And I always, I'm not a huge, well, I guess I am more of a property rights guy probably than a lot of the Commissioners, but I just, I have a hard time doing government, any type of government regulation or prohibition on somebody that doesn't agree to that on their own property. And so, I share that concern. I think that's a good solution, Director, potentially. And so, definitely share those same concerns. Is there a motion, Commissioner? Oh, discussion. We're still on discussion. Commissioner Henley?
I just heard this mentioned, and hopefully, I'm not missing something, but there was discussion of amendment to the downtown code, which I think is kind of with this body. And I'm curious of, are those functions running parallel with this or kind of the staggering of time? Because what we heard from some of the opposition is they're uncertain of a few things. I think at least that might be one we could describe here today.
So, our design studio is undertaking a review and analysis of the downtown code. That's under Joni Williams' team. And we've had one work session with the commission to talk about what your goals would be and ensure that we're in alignment there. I do think historic preservation is going to be a goal, and we're going to want to look at the entitlements within those areas and make sure that we understand all the tools and levers that can be accomplished. So, that is occurring. We wanted to supplement our work with some baseline market analysis, and so that's what we're preparing today. And so, we're hearing and getting all of this input, and we want to make a great path for the property owners who have historic structures, but also ensure that we're taking into account the overall economic conditions. And so, I anticipate bringing this back to the commission in the fall.
Thank you for that. And the comments previously discussed, I mean, they addressed some of my initial concerns very much spoken by Commissioner Clifton. All the considerations that are taking place here helped me feel better about that. And I know we're not supposed to augment what the map is, but I think there's a pretty clear delineation of support and lack of support based on the correspondence we've gotten of where those are. So, again, I think our advisement to Councilmember O'Connell is pretty clearly, you know, transferable based on what we've received. So, I'm more comfortable now than I was just a few moments earlier. So, thank you for that.
Thank you, Commissioner. Any other discussion? So, it's time for a motion.
I make a motion to approve with a condition, Councilmember O'Connell continue to work with the property owners to redefine the boundary.
Especially on Union Street, right? Especially on Union Street, is that correct? Okay. I just want to make sure.
Union Story.
I like to be a little specific. Thank you, Commissioner. It's a proper motion. Is there a second? Second? Any other discussion? Seeing none, all in favor say aye. Oppose, no? Ayes have it. And thank you, Commissioners, for that. And so, that concludes items to be considered on the regular part, but we are now under H, which is Other Business, which is item number, oh, hold on, one second.
Someone that was speaking at the table left their sunglasses, and Abby has them, if they are yours.
Public service.
Sorry, yes. Abby has someone's glasses.
You get full service around the Planning Commission. All right. So, now we're on Other Business, and so we are on to new employee contracts. And so, I've been working with the staff team on this and with the Director and with Mr. Rooker. And I want to thank George for all of his work on this. It's been a lot of work, Director, and I just, I want to say that publicly, that he's worked really hard on this. I know the Commissioners have gotten an email, and we're going to pass something out, but Commissioner, Mr. Rooker, do you want to just kind of tell us the intro and what we're looking at so that the Commissioners kind of know what's going on?
Yes, it's working. Yes, I'll be happy to, and thank you. I am George Rooker with the Planning Department. I did send out an email a few days ago to explain some information about the FY24 budget and the pay plan, and in particular, a classification study that was conducted by Metro HR for some of our planning positions. HR does conduct classification studies periodically for positions within the Metro pay plan. They actually conducted a study of our Planner III positions about five or six years ago and increased that position by one pay grade. This year, they studied our Planner I's, II's, Planning Manager I's and Planning Manager II positions and increased each of those positions, each of those positions by one pay grade, which is equivalent to an increase in the minimum and maximum salary for those pay grades of about 10%. And that's before the 6% COLA was applied. So, those positions received roughly 15 to, well, 16% increase in pay for those positions. And that went into effect on July 1 of this year, and we're really grateful to Metro HR for that study. They did that by comparing the planning positions with other positions within Metro, and they did that at our request to try to help us recruit and retain really qualified employees. So, we appreciate that from them.
Thank you, George. And I don't, I truly don't think this would have happened without Mr. Rooker and the team kind of pushing on HR. And so, I want to say thank you on the classifications. It's a really, really big deal. I've been here a long time. We've had some turnover in the past, and it's really hard to find, once somebody leaves, it costs the city a lot of money in training and getting them up to speed. And so, I think this is a really important part. And so, I want to say thank you, and I really appreciate it. So, the team is here to ask any, answer any questions, but I wanted to make sure that y'all knew that...
employees. So, we appreciate that from them.
Thank you, George. And I don't, I truly don't think this would have happened without Mr. Rooker and the team kind of pushing on HR. And so I want to say thank you on the classifications. It's a really, really big deal. I've been here a long time. We've had some turnover in the past, and it's really hard to find, once somebody leaves, it costs the city a lot of money in training and getting them up to speed. And so I think this is a really important part. And so I want to say thank you, and I really appreciate it. So, the team is here to ask any, answer any questions, but I wanted to make sure that y'all knew that we worked with the team and the executive committee, and I think this is a really big deal for us. Any questions? Any? We'll need a, well, we'll need a motion. And so I think it's a very specific motion, and I think Commissioner Clifton is going to give us that motion.
Yes, thank you. It's my understanding that when it comes to specifically the executive director position, that our process is that this must be, it should be voted on by the commission itself. So, my motion is that we accept the proposed increase in addition to what has been described of 6% as an additional 9% of open range increase, which comes directly from our executive committee as a recommendation. I've had a chance to look at the salaries of department heads in Metro, and with this addition, there will still be a large number of department heads who apparently are considered to have either a more difficult or harder job than being the head of the planning commission and department. I don't quite understand how that could be possible, but that's sort of beyond today's scope. So, I would move that we accept the recommendation of the executive committee provides for the COLA that comes to all Metro employees, but has an additional 9% open range increase based upon the studies that's been conducted.
So, that's, so this is really two things. You got the executive directors' pay raise and then all the other employees as well. And so thank you, Commissioner Clifton, for that. And I do want to say I'm very proud of our executive director. She has led the team, and I feel, I really do feel this, and that the culture is in a really good spot with the team. It's not always perfect, but I think that it's in a really good spot, and we have an outstanding staff there. And I think a lot of that is due to our executive director, Lucy Kempf, and I have enjoyed working with her. She, this job, as Stuart alluded to, Commissioner Clifton, that it, you have to have political acumen and you have to have a planning degree and background. And I think that sometimes that's hard to find in planners and engineers, and we're lucky to have one of those people. So, I have enjoyed it. I know that the commissioners have, and so this is really important. Thank you, Commissioner Clifton, for the motion. Is there a second? Second. Any other discussion? Seeing none. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Oppose, no. Eyes have it. And all of the raises in pay plans are adopted. Congratulations, Director Kemp. All right. So, historic, we're on item 32 under H, historic.
Yes. We understand Historic Zoning Commission will be having the presentation by planning staff about middle housing presentation next month, so we are very looking forward to have it.
Commissioner Henley, parks?
Yes. So, at the last parks meeting, we had the pleasure of having a presentation of the parks staff, planning staff's efforts and presentation to parks on the Bellmead Highlands, and I believe on the agenda for our August 1 meeting. So, again, double dose of planning. So, really looking forward to that again, but excited to help support and facilitate that level of collaboration and exchange between departments.
Thank you, Commissioner. And executive committee, really, the work has been around the pay raises and employee retention. And so we've already stated that. And then I think we only have one meeting in August, August 24, and it will be here in, Lisa, in this building, in this room, just
Yes.
As a reminder.
Yes, I think the next two meetings are here. Yep.
So, commissioners, if you'd just make a note of that. And then we'll go back to our regularly, two times a month, meetings. And that's under aye in the other business. All right. So, now we are on to the director's report.
Well, I too just wanted to take a moment to acknowledge George, but also the planning teams who work incredibly hard. And so often, I think work can go unnoticed. You're working in the background, you're trying to solve issues. And it's my hope that the staff knows that we are committed to the new staff that we bring on, but also the longtime staff members who really make the department wiser every day with the knowledge that they have of the city. And I'm really grateful. I do also want to note that during, because the department has been able to bring additional resources to bear, we've been able to structure in a way that I think improves our decision-making and helps our team be able to function better, including a new assistant director role of land development. And I was so excited that Lisa Milligan accepted that role. Lisa has been with the department for about nine years, and when I first got here, she was processing about 90 cases with maybe three land development staff members. And it was a, it was a really tense moment, and she just showed a lot of leadership during that moment because land development had shrunk. And this was about six years ago. And since then, I've worked with her to build a larger team there that's better able to handle the immense workload that we have. But I just want to thank Lisa for her extraordinary work at council, her extraordinary work on the planning commission, answering questions. It's talk about a unique skill set to be able to handle the administrative, and it turns out can also fix the clock pretty quickly. So, I don't mean, that's pretty good. So, anyway, Lisa, congrats, and well deserved. And that's it, Chairman.
Thank you, Director. And Lisa, we're so glad. We're always, where's Lisa? What's the?
Yes.
Lisa knows that answer. So, thank you very much for your service. Thank you, Director. All right. Legislative report.
Well, next Tuesday's the big night, so we'll see how late our public hearing goes. And I'll have, it will be all Brett Withers all night because I've got three items, and they will not go as smoothly as they did tonight. But so wish the council luck next week. And then we're wrapping up on the 15th, so we are drawing to a close. Did want to mention, there's an item that had come before the commission before, which is about, we used to call it traffic impact studies, and now they're calling it access management studies, or, different day, new name. But there is some ongoing work with that that is taking place in the council office, at least when I left, in terms of working with NDOT and maybe some others to do some amendments and substitutes, mostly just to clarify language and things like that. But I know how important that issue is when cases come before the commission in terms of like, what about traffic and what about multi-mobility? And that's so important to the work that we, as a city, need to think a little bit more globally about rather than each individual parcel. So, that's important, but council office has continued to work on that. That one is also on public hearing on Tuesday, but we may have some amendments on that that hopefully make it a little bit clearer for everybody. But other than that, I think we're counting, some of us are counting down the days, but [laughing].
Thank you, Councilman.
It's been, it's been an honor and a pleasure to serve on the council, for sure.
Thank you, Councilman. And it's not his last meeting. He has another meeting, so we can't say goodbye yet, Councilman. We'll wait for that. All right. So, that concludes our agenda. Is there a motion to adjourn? We're adjourned.
This has been a service of the Metro Nashville Network. If you would like to see this presentation again or for more information on this and other programs, visit Nashville.gov.